All right, I see six o'clock.
Dawn, we're live.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gory.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Board Meeting. Today is September 8th, 2020. The time is 6:00 P.M. I get so emotional every time I hear it. All right, at this time, I'm going to do the roll call. I'm gonna start with us in numerical order. District 1 Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
District 2 Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3 Jessie Gorey, present. District 4 Victoria Williams.
Present.
District 5 Ophelia Burrows. I know Ms. Burrows is here. District 6 Mary Baker.
Present.
District 7 Judy Johnson is away on personal business today. District 8 Dr. Lika Anderson.
Here.
District 9 Benjamin Striker.
Present.
Dr. Beasley Superintendent.
I'm here, Madam Chair, member of the board.
Attorney Clem Doyle.
Present.
Dawn Boyle, Board Administrative Assistant.
I'm present.
And then we have all of the Clayton County Board of Education staff. They're all present. Okay, at this time, I am going to amend the agenda before we get started. We realized that we had not been including our announcements in the, in our board meetings because we'd been virtual and everything had been online. So at this time, I'm going to move that we amend the agenda to add announcements that will come immediately after executive session. Can I get a second to the, to that motion?
I'll move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that we amend the agenda to add announcements to our agenda after executive session. So again, I'm gonna cop go down the road. Ms. Bowles.
Yes. I was just gonna ask if you wanted to amend the consent agenda as well, or no?
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna pull the, I'll pull one item out and just let us vote it, vote on it separately.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Ms. Bowles.
Um, yes, vote, and I'd like to pull something on the consent agenda too, but it may be the same item as you. So my vote is yes on this matter.
Yeah, all right, when we get to this consent, we will. Mr. Christmas.
Yes.
Yes for Jessie Gorey. Victoria, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Burrows. Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Anderson. Mr. Striker.
Affirmative.
Okay, so I, I didn't hear a, Ms. Ms. Burrows, can you just raise your hand up? Is that a yes for you? Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Dr. Anderson. Well, I'm, I'm just gonna, we'll just go with a.
I say yes.
Thank you, all right. The vote is eight zero that we will amend the agenda to add the announcements. Okay, thank you all so much. At this time, I will read the ethics statement, which is in accordance with Board Policy BH. It is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter of schedule to come before the board this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict of appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. All right, thank you. Seeing none. Okay, at this time, we will have public participation, which will be a little bit different than it has been in the past. In the past, we have, since we have been having a meeting where the public came in, people came and spoke before the mic, but we have changed it. So I'm going to read the new rules for public participation. The Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation and will hear any interested individual pursuant to guidelines for virtual meetings, which are aligned with the Board's policy, BCBI. For the September 8th meeting of the Board, public participation is email based. The first 10 emails submitted during the submission period that ended this evening at 5:45 and that adhere to the Board's stability policy will be read into the meeting record by the clerk to the Board. A three-minute time limit has been set forth for each email read. Time will not be extended for the reading of another email. Charles White will be the timekeeper. Board members will not respond to an emails, comments, or questions. The chair may respond as appropriate. All emails to receive will be archived at this time. Take it over, Dawn.
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Beasley. We did receive a total of 33 emails as of 5:45 this evening. I will read the first 10 received and give you their listed concerns and/or comments. The first email received was from Mrs. Scott Robinson. Her question to, to submit to the Board for consideration. If it was mandatory to cancel school for the safety of students when there was one case in Clayton County in March, why are we discussing returning to school when there were thousands of cases within Clayton County? This email is from Ashley Morris. How is virtual learning supposed to help working parents? It seems as though virtual learning is set up for parents who sit at home, who are retired, or who can work from home. Also, bus that is supposed to bring breakfast and lunch actually arrives dur- during the same hours that the kids are in class and I am working. How is this supposed to help anyone? Why are we having a normal school year when nothing has been normal this entire year? The school system should have come up with mini semester and end by December. Please keep working parents in mind when making these decisions. The third email received was from a Ms. Sandra Keith. As a parent, I am frustrated, so I know my students are frustrated. I have one student in Swent Elementary, one child. My child loves school, but is done with school at this point. Her teacher rushed my daughter through her assignment test yesterday. I have never seen my daughter just stop trying and pick an answer before. And then, after she rushed her, they played games on iReady all day while waiting for another student to finish when my daughter could have took her time and did her best. I feel no testing will be accurate online. How, when these things are occurring? My other student is in Drew High School and has been getting on every day, and they mark him absent every day. There has been many days the Zooms don't work and he is not able to get on. My students are not adjusting fast enough. As a parent, that is a full-time, that is a full-time job for me. How can I work and make a living? I am a parent, the breadwinner, a chef, a housekeeper, a counselor, and now I'm a teacher too. I am requesting less screen time. Zoom from 7:40 to 1:30 for my third grader and 8:45 to 2:30 for my ninth grader is too much. The kids are losing focus by 11:00. This is not in school. It's not help to look at a screen that long, then turn around and do your homework. Thank you for your time and reading my concerns. Be blessed, be safe, and wear your mask.
We will make sure that we seek some assistance for Ms. Keith. Go ahead.
The next email is from Renita Shepherd. Since foster children are no longer under the homeless department in Clayton County, who is the foster parent liaison? When I receive foster children, how can I get them assessed to find out what reading and math levels they are on? When will there be workshops held for foster parents to address the services that Clayton County Schools provide for foster children? Will, when, credit recovery be offered? And does CCPS have the funding to cover the cost of credit recovery for foster children? Does CCPS offer tutoring for foster children? When CCPS have workshops for parents, is it possible that parents can receive a certificate for credit toward foster parent training hours or, or bright from the start training hours? And she left, she gave two contact phone numbers that can be reached at.
Okay, thank you.
The next email is from Shanid Daniel. She says, "Good evening. Special needs, special education parents and teachers would like to know the following. Why are, why our students didn't receive laptop? What was the rationale of this decision for not issuing CCPS laptops to the students? If the students weren't going to receive county laptops, then why weren't their at-home learning materials purchased to help assist our students? What's happening with special needs pre-K funding?"
I'm gonna let Dr. Beasley just respond to that one.
Well, I can, I can share, Madam Chair, member of the board and public, that laptops were issued to all students regardless of their, their status, regular ed, special needs, et cetera. And of course, laptops and Chromebooks are still coming in. So I would encourage the parent to see their principal if it's still a concern as of the submission of the email or as it has been read. I would also say that relative to special ed services, work if your case manager and who will work with your lead teacher of special ed to address any specific concerns that you may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The next email is from Jakia Maxwell. She says, "Hello, my name is Jakia Maxwell, and I have three elementary students in Clayton County Schools. They are in first, second, and fourth grade. I also have a seventh grader. After this first month, I have serious concerns, and I have some suggestions to help your parents and teachers. Being on the computer screen all day is causing vision issues with my children, and more importantly, it causes unnecessary anxiety. Teachers do not need to see my children all day long with different schedules. Do you know how distracting it is to have four different lunch periods and special learning time? Teachers and administrators are under the assumption that parents have the time and the individual space to accommodate all of the children so that they are facing a wall in their own rooms and it is quiet. Cut costs, lay some teachers off, have a set three-hour of instruction time, and let the children complete and do the work. All-day-long teachers are saying, getting, getting your mommy, get someone to help you. Well, if I'm doing the teacher's job, why are they, why are you paying them? I need accommodations for a child that has a 504 plan. It would be easier for parents to have the teacher's lesson plan, standards, et cetera, and for the teachers to give us the work for our children to submit. Now, my middle school student is fine. He attends a scholar, so he is accustomed to Google Classroom. This is not working. I have many concerns. Please feel free to contact me." And she lists her email and phone number. She says, "I'm constantly at work, so this is the best way to reach."
Thank you.
The next one is from Brittany Coakley. Hello, my name is Brittany Coakley. I have a kindergartner and a second grader that attends Kilpatrick Elementary. My second grader has an IEP, and I'm concerned that virtually learning is going to be a problem. I wanted to suggest having a discussion about kids with IEP and kindergartners being physically in school. My second grader is now repeating second grade, and I'm afraid that she, they will end up repeating it again.
Miss, uh, we probably shouldn't even go any further. I think we've given a little bit too much information on that student right there. Yeah, we'll stop on that one.
Okay.
Since she gave the chance, since she said the name.
She didn't, I think, list the name, but yeah.
Well, she, since she said her name, I said, I think that's a little bit too much information for us to.
Jennifer Benefield. Says, "Good evening." This is from Coach Benefield. "I would like to make the following statement at the board meeting. I appreciate our county superintendent and the board members. They have been tasked with what I can only imagine must be the hardest decision of their careers. I am proud to work for Clayton County Schools. We have shown that as a county, our leaders are willing and able to step up and protect our students and families. They did not wait to see what other counties were going to do. They said, 'This is what needs to be done, and this is what we're going to do.' That is true leadership. Sometimes, as stakeholders, we forget what is truly important. There is no education, no sport, no extracurricular activities without our help. I would like to publicly think, thank Dr. Beasley, Ms. Gory, and the rest of the board members for putting the safety of our community before everything else." Coach Benefield from Kendrick Middle School.
Yeah, okay.
The next one is from Sherry Porman. She writes, "My children have food allergies and had never had a school lunch. They enjoy the silk milk that was available for a short period of time. The pandemic EBT was the best thing that ever happened from this pandemic. Will we be getting another issue of lines for lunch?" The last question comes from Lena Buckner. She says, "Hello, I am a parent to a fourth grader and that attends Harper Elementary. Let me start by saying that I do love the school that my child attends, and his classroom teacher is the greatest. But there have definitely been some snags in the teaching model this year. My concerning questions are for elementary school only. They started out using Google Meets for classes, but some teachers want to switch over to Zoom because it is easier for the teachers to navigate. But the students have just gotten to Google Meet, so why switch to a new system for the kids to learn all over again? Also, wasn't Zoom banned for use from the school district?" The second concern, they changed the school times from 7:55 a.m. to 2:15 p.m., to 7:45 to 12:15 due to the amount of time the students were spending in front of the computer, and some parents saying that it was too much. But honestly, with the amount of homework that is given from all their class, they are still spending the same amount of time in front of the computer, if not more. The third concern, while we are very grateful for provided school breakfast and lunches, can the schools please do a better job at making sure they are not giving students bad or expired food or milk? There were a few times my son got expired regular and chocolate milk or the fruit had mold on it. I only have one question. When will the kids go back to face-to-face learning? Thank you."
All right, thank you so much. And all I can say is, right now, we don't know when that will be. I thank all of our constituents for sending in their concerns, and I especially wanna thank Coach Benefield because it was nice to get one compliment out of 10 emails. I can only imagine if we had read, how many did you say?
We had 33 as of 5:45.
Well, it looks like we might have only received three good compliments out of 33. I'm just gonna say this, and I might be out of place for saying it, but I just thank God I'm alive. Because with what's happening in this country, we, some of us wouldn't even be having this meeting. And I guess I should thank those people that sent those comments in because if not, they, you know, they, they are also given the opportunity to send those comments in. But ladies and gentlemen, we're in a pandemic. We are doing the very best that we can do. We are concerned about everyone's health. If we could be open, we would be open. And we would make sure that we didn't have all this screen time, and we would make sure that all the food that we had, I'm, I'm so sorry to hear that about some food, but we, we will make sure that we check and make sure that all of our food meets the expiration time. I'm so sorry for that. But I'm going to move on because I wanna thank, again, I was very emotional with the, our beginning with the Singing Brothers. And at this time, we are going to move on to some good news. The board recognition. I'm gonna pass it over to you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Ms. Gory. Madam Chair, Madam Board Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Beasley, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor to officially recognize members of the Singing Brothers and Stillwell Coral Group under the direction of Dr. Jimmy Cheek for their performance in "Let Every Voice Insing" that was debuted during our work session on August 31st and repeated earlier this evening. Each of these students will receive a board certificate of commendation, which is presented for outstanding achievement as recognized by the Clayton County Board of Education. Those students honored are K.O. Mapson, Daniel Glimal, Jordan Stewart, Juwan, or Daywon Johnson, Jacavis Buckles, and Donovan Slack. The board also takes this time to salute Coral Director Dr. Jimmy Cheek and accompanying us, Vickery Brown, for their outstanding performance. and accompanying us, Bickory Brown, for their outstanding leadership in this performance. I now turn it back over to the board chair for additional comments.
Dr. Cheek, at this time, I would like for you to say a few words and explain to our audience about how you and the singing gentleman, I'm sorry, Singing Brothers put this together. And I'm not sure what everyone else can see. So maybe we might need to call those names again. And the Singing Brothers, raise your hand up so everybody can see who you are. Go ahead, Dr. Cheek. Oh, I see some hands.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Beasley, and Clayton County Board of Education staff. First, I'd like to thank you all for your support of the arts. I'm one of many fine arts teachers in this district that has pretty much gone the extra mile during this pandemic to make sure that our students are still learning, that our standards are still high, and that we're still accomplishing what we set to accomplish through the arts. I'm very proud to say that what you witnessed this evening was my first project. I have since gone in and done additional editing to clean up the project. But what I wanted to make sure was that in spite of us not being able to come together, we could still bring different voices together. So Mr. Brown actually recorded a piano part. I emailed it to each of the students. I asked them to submit me a recording with them singing to the piano. And we put it all together and that's what art is, putting it all together. So, you know, we're just very thankful for your support of what we have done. And thank you for the recognition that you have provided to us on this evening.
All right, and I just want to let them know one other little tidbit that you told me. Which one of the gentlemen did you tell me that went outside and recorded, but he had to do it over again because you could hear the crickets? Because let them know you're a profession.
Yeah, Dewan Johnson.
Where is Dewan?
I think he tipped out, he has an evening job.
Oh, okay, see, that's what I, he works in the evening. He came home from his job and he took the music and stepped outside to record the song. And he was doing such a good job. I guess the crickets wanted to join in and sing with him. When he submitted it, Dr. Cheek could hear the crickets and made him do it again. But that's just the perfectionist that we have over there at Stillwell. And young man, just thank you all so much. I wish we could just go live and let you all sing, but I've learned that everybody's internet speed is not the same. So if you started singing, it probably would be a little muffled, which is, you know, probably a little bit of what we saw. But I do appreciate you all so much for doing that for us. Thank you all so much again for joining us this evening, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good evening, Singing Brothers.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, we have finished, are we finished with our board recognitions, Mr. White?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, we're done with those. Okay, at this time, we do need to have executive session. And I need a motion to go into executive session. We need to discuss personnel matters in executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I have a second from Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. At this time, I'm going to call the row for the vote. Ms. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Chris. Jessie Gori, yes. Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Burrows.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Affirmative.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll be going into executive session. Members of the board, remember, the new way that we do, you're gonna click onto the other link to go into executive session. And we will put this meeting on mute and go into the other link for executive session. We'll be out as soon as we can.
We're live.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have returned from executive session where we discussed personnel matters. At this time, Dr. Beasley, I will pass it to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair members of the board, to the public, we have two recommendations today. First, I'd like to recommend for the position of coordinator of special education focusing on preschool and speech to Kea Jeffrey.
I need a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Baker.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Kea Jeffrey as coordinator of special ed, preschool and speech.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Christmas.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in properly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Kea Jeffrey as the coordinator of special education for preschool and speech. At this time, let me call the roll for a vote. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes for me. Ms. Williams? Ms. Burrows? Ms. Burrows, can you raise your hand for me? Okay, thank you. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
Okay, the vote is eight zero. Congratulations, Ms. Jeffrey.
Congratulations, Ms. Jeffrey. Next, I'd like to recommend for the position of coordinator of special ed focusing on instruction and elementary support, Tyra Simon.
I need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Bowles?
I move that we accept the recommendation for Ms. Tyra Simon to become the coordinator of special education with a focus on instruction and elementary support.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It has been properly moved in second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Ms. Tyra Simon as the coordinator of special ed for instruction in elementary. Again, let me call the roll for a vote, please. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Christmas, yes for me. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
Okay, again, we have an eight zero vote. Congratulations to Ms. Simon.
Congratulations, Ms. Simon. Welcome aboard in your new role. Madam Chair, that concludes my recommendations for today.
All right. Okay, at this time, we have another recommendation from executive session, and I'm gonna make the motion to to approve the amended and restated superintendent agreement.
I second. I second. I'm chair.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that we approve the amended and restated superintendent agreement. And at this time, I will call the roll for a vote. Ms. Bowles?
No.
Okay. Mr. Christmas?
No.
Jessie Goree? Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
All right, and the votes are there will be six in favor and two opposed. All right. At this time, we will move to our next item on the agenda which we have added. That will be the announcements, and they will be from Dr. Anderson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of September. September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It is also home to Patriots Day on the 11th, Grandparents' Day on the 13th, and U.S. Constitution Day on the 17th. Clayton County Public Schools is partnering with North Star Educational Consulting Group to make available a series of online training webinars for parents, guardians, and caregivers. Sessions are scheduled for the 11th, 18th, and 25th of September. Each hour-long session is scheduled to begin at 2:00 PM and will focus on best practices for supporting learning at home in a virtual environment. Parents, guardians, and caregivers can register by visiting the Infinite Campus Parent Portal. Parents are invited to attend a Virtual School Choice Magnet Fair on Saturday, September 12th, at the Ashtrut Cathy Professional Learning Center. Elementary programs will be the focus at 9:00 AM, middle school programs at 10:00 AM, and high school programs at 11:00 AM. The Virtual School Choice Magnet Fair is designed to provide important information to parents and guardians about the district's school choice and magnet programs. The fair will also serve as a meet-and-greet opportunity to engage with school and program administrators and teachers. Those interested in attending should pre-register on the district's website or Facebook page. The district will observe Hispanic Heritage Month beginning Tuesday, September 15, and continuing through Thursday, October 15. All district schools and offices will be closed for fall break Monday, September 21st through Friday, September 25th. The district will return to a regular schedule on Monday, September 28th. Clayton County Public Schools is partnering with the Coalition of County Governmental and Community Leaders and and the When We All Vote organization in hosting the Clayton County Contactless Voter Registration Drive-Thru on Tuesday, September 22nd, at Tahr Stadium in Jonesboro. Held in observance of National Voter Registration Day, the two-hour event will begin at 5:30 PM. For more information on this event, please contact Janay Morris, again, Janay Morris, at 770-477-3349. And I'm gonna state that again, 770-477-3349. All right, and the September Board Work Session is scheduled for Monday, September 28th. The meeting, which will be held virtually, will begin at 6:00 PM. The district's Purchasing Department is sponsoring a How-to-do-Business with Clayton County Public Schools seminar on Tuesday, September 29th, beginning at 9:00 AM. The seminar will be conducted virtually using video conferencing technology. It will offer vendors and suppliers an opportunity to connect directly with the district's purchasing staff and other CCPS representatives. Anyone interested in participating in this informative event should pre-register by visiting the district's website and Facebook page. The October Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 5th. The meeting will be held virtually and will begin at 6:00 PM. And finally, if you haven't done so, the Board of Education and the school district encourages you to take a few minutes and complete the 2020 U.S. Census. Your response helps to direct millions of dollars in federal funds to local communities such as Clayton County. Those dollars are allocated on the strength of a community's population count. You can make a profound difference in our county through your participation. For more information, please visit the official Census website at www.census.gov. Madam Chair, that concludes tonight's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for those announcements. They are greatly appreciated, especially, we need the public to go out and complete the census and make sure you're registered to vote. This is a very important year.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we've got one more thing. September is ovarian cancer month, and so we need to make sure that everyone is aware of this. Please make sure that you go out, and ladies, make sure that you get checked. And again, September is also ovarian cancer awareness month. Thank you.
Thank you. That is very important, very important. Okay, at this time, the next item that we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from Board Meeting, August 3rd, the Board Work Session, July 27th, the Cow Board Meeting on August 6th, and also the Cow Board Meeting on August 20th. Hoping that everyone has looked at those minutes and that they are all in order. And we will just approve them as presented unless there's someone that needs to add anything to the minutes. So, you know, we will accept them as being approved. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I want to start by, I'm going to pull the legislative excuse me, I can't even talk, the legislative priorities for school year for us to vote on that separately because I want to explain something. Ms. Bowles mentioned earlier in the meeting that she wanted to pull an item from the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, Item C, please.
Okay, she would like to pull the purchasing report. So, those items, we will vote on separately. Okay, at this time, I'm going to move that we approve the consent agenda minus the purchasing report and the legislative priorities for school year 2020-2021. Okay, it's been moved in properly second by Ms. Baker that we approve the consent agenda without Item C and F. I will take vote at this time. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Christmas?
Yes.
Yes for Ms. Goree. Victoria Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
All right. Okay, then we will now I'm gonna just go down to F, and then we'll come back to Item C for Ms. Bowles. All right, so I want everybody to go to Item F. And we have an executive summary from the superintendent's office, which will be, these are legislative priorities for the board and for the board as well as from the school district. But I also want to add and let the public know that what the item that actually is also from the Board of Education, we voted some time ago in regards to legislation for our salaries, and that information never went forth. So, the board will still need to go and present to the delegation. So, I just want you to make certain that everybody knows that when we're voting, these are items from the board and from the district. So, I just wanted to make that declaration here at the meeting. So, we're not voting. You all received two forms from our legal department as to how it could look. And at this time, we're just gonna let them stay as they are because one of them we had already agreed on, and then there's the second format we will present to the delegation, and at that time, we will see which one would be the best way for us to go for. So, are there any questions here? Okay, so at this time, I need a motion for us to accept the legislative priorities for school year 2020-2021, which includes the district legislative priorities and the board legislative priorities.
So, move, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Striker. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second from Mr. Striker and Ms. Bowles that we accept the legislative priorities for school year 2020-2021 for the school board and the district. And I will call the roll for the vote. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes for me. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
Okay, and it's unanimous, zero. Okay, let's go back to the Item C, Ms. Bowles, which is purchasing report.
Are we voting on that at this time?
Yeah, we will. Is there, so did you have anything you want to state or just wanna?
Yeah, just want to pull that separately from approving the whole full consent agenda.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I need a motion for to vote on the purchasing report.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Okay, that's Ms. Baker, and who was the second?
Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Anderson. Okay, it's been moved in properly second that we accept the purchasing report, and I will take the vote, starting with Ms. Bowles.
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christmas?
No.
That'll be a yes from Ms. Goree. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Affirmative.
All right, we have six in favor and two opposed. All right, thank you. All right, we're down to the business agenda. At this time, we are going to vote on Policy Series A. This is the second read, and time for the vote. Do I have a motion to?
So moved, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Striker. I have a second.
I second.
Dr. Anderson, it has been moved in properly second that we accept Policy A. I'm gonna call the roll for the vote, starting with Ms. Bowles.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to vote, but I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we do policy readings, do we do two or three reads?
We do two. We have, we have the first read, we have a second read, and then when we come to the third, that is when we vote. And we are going to, that is why this, this will, these will be the last two that we go in this order. We're going, that's why I pulled the B policies, and we're going to revamp our whole policy development.
Well, if we're on the second read, I had one minor edit unless it's time to vote.
It is time to vote. The second, well, actually, I don't know why I say, we're actually not on the second read. We're actually on the, if you want to say the third read, we were on the second read last meeting.
What, what, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to hear Ms. Bowles's edit. What would that edit be?
That's fine.
I, I actually think the A and C policies are actually pretty strong as written, but the one edit on the A policy, I was struck by a section called Oversight Actions. The reason I want to take our time on this is Policy A is actually about board member duties, which is our domain. So, there's a section entitled Oversight Actions that refers to something called Oversight Work Sessions. And it says that Oversight Work Sessions should happen four times a year. And I was wondering if we could change four times a year to the word quarterly. Just because four times a year, and obviously, it's up for board discussion. Would love to hear y'all's thoughts, but four times a year could be, you know, two in January, two in December. Quarterly says, hey, periodically throughout the year, maybe every three months, and that was my edit. Thanks for asking.
Okay, well, yes, at this time, I would say that what we could do on that, because, because we don't, it's not even, it's it's stated that way. If you want to, you know, we could actually go back to pulling it, but see, this is why we need to work, we need to, we can vote one way or the other because it actually, we handle the oversight with our meetings. And so, and we're going to address B policies, which would actually end up going back to the A policy because this is, this is, this is an issue that we have in that we, the board members need to be reading the policies, and we need to
It's time to vote.
At the time. So, yes, Mr. Striker had a point. Go ahead.
Yeah, is it possible that we can add that edit in and vote on it at the same time? Vote with that condition?
At this time, I actually would not, I would not be in favor of it, but I'm one vote, and what I would rather do is to actually pull it because quarterly, quarterly does not make any difference. So, and like I said, if we, if we would read, if we would read these policies, it's quarterly that, because it's, because we actually don't, it's not even quarterly. We don't, I would not even want to say quarterly because if you're looking at quarterly means that we would only look at the finance department maybe once, and it actually, if you go back and read the whole policy, it's, we have oversight over the whole school district, and we should not want to look at anything just four times a year.
Yes, ma'am, I couldn't agree more, and I think that this whole subsection just reveals that, to your point, the Oversight Work Sessions as described are actually not happening even one time a year. So, quarterly was, was the generous language. The really cool thing about this subsection, which is why I think we should lean into it, is it talks about KPIs from each. So, we get a certain level of departmental reports every board meeting, you're right, on a monthly basis. But this, the way it's written out is much more deep, and so, we don't have to choose just one department because you're right, we would only be looking at four. But the way this is written, sounds like a good opportunity for us to learn and leverage our oversight. So,
Yeah, exactly. So, what did you say?
But to your point, we're just one of nine, so I just wanted to
Well, you know what?
Language is better.
What, what I would suggest here, I would suggest that we pull the policy because if we read the policies,
Yes.
It is the problem. We're not reading the policy, and we're not understanding what the policy means. I have no problem pulling the, pulling it out because this is something, when, when we get the policies, and I said, this is the third time. We should, this, this, that's why we need, that's why we're going to go back to Policy B and talk about the board as, as a whole. The board needs to read and understand what the policies mean because we took a long time, actually, to be honest with you, I personally don't feel like there's anything wrong with that policy because it took us almost a year to put that policy in place. So, if, to me, the best thing would be to pull the policy so that, that everybody can understand further what it actually means.
Right, you're, you're, you're correct, Madam Chair. I definitely agree with you that we have to be a lot more diligent in reading and getting to this in advance before board meetings, but, but I do think on this specific case, let's pull that policy and then vote on it from the next meeting. But that has to stop. You are correct.
Okay, so what did you just say? Did you say?
I just said, pull the policy.
Okay.
And let this happen again.
All right, so I'm going to go with let us back up because I need to see where we are. Okay, so, I think we actually have a motion on the floor. I'm not sure. Mr. Doyle, do we have a motion on the floor? Did we, did we start with a motion again? Ms. Bowles, I forgot.
But if there is no objection, Madam Chair, you can simply pull it, and if there's no objection, then it's done.
All right, then I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna pull the policy. Do we have any objections to pulling Policy A?
No.
All right, so we're pulling it, and going forth, we're going to make sure before we come in here that we have this, we have, we're straight on what we're doing. So, now we're down to Policy C. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Yes, do you, do you have a comment or a motion or what?
I move that we go on and go, go on and do what we need to do with Policy C.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
All right, it has been moved and second that we accept Policy C.
Y'all know, I had to put a little humor to it because you don't, let's, let's let the stress go.
Yes, because it's been, it's been, yes. We could. All right, starting with Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Christmas?
We gonna do, go and do what he do like goddamn.
Yes, okay, a yes for me. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Burrows?
Okay, yes.
Okay, Dr. Anderson?
Make it do what it do.
Okay, Mr. Striker?
I can't think of anything funny, so affirmative.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Striker. Okay, so we have an eight zero vote that we're accepting Policy C. All right, so the last item that we have is to, we're gonna, I need to add something here with our, the Governance Training Plan. Okay, so we need to approve two things here. With our Governance Training Plan, that is our, the way that we will have training going forth, and you know that we, actually, at this time, we don't have any new board members. So, the, everybody's training, you all have made me lose my paper, here we go. We will, our requirement is that we have nine hours before June 30th, 2021. And so, we need to vote on, generally, we use, I mean, Mr. Doyle, sorry. We're gonna use Mr. Doyle and probably GSBA for some of that training, so there will be nine hours. So, the second part of that is, and we'll just, we can either vote on them together or separately. The second part is, you, you all have your, you were sent, you've already seen it a million times, but just for me to be, to make sure that we've already done this. I did not feel like going back to look for minutes. We are applying to be an exemplary board. We've done that for the past couple of years. I've sent you a copy of what the application looks like. But just to be sure that we have voted in public that that is what we want to do, that needs to be in by September 30th. We have a few people that need to, that are finishing up on their hours because of COVID. It had been extended to September 30th, so we need to vote. So, do we want to put, put these together?
Yes.
Okay, let's put it together. Let's put it together.
I move that we use, for our Governance Training Plan, we use GSBA and Mr. Doyle to train us. And I move that we apply to GSBA as an exemplary board.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and that second, yes, and that second was, I'm not sure if it was for Mr. Striker or?
Christmas.
Christmas. Uh, Mr. Christmas, okay, because I can't see everyone. It has been moved in properly second that we accept, that we utilize Mr. Doyle and GSBA for board training and to apply for exemplary board. All right, let me call the roll for the vote. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Christmas, yes for Jessie Goree. Ms. Williams? Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Okay, another eight zero vote, and as I believe, we have covered everything on the agenda, and we are now adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want, I just want to tell you how great of a job you're doing.
Oh, thank you, sir.
You sure are.
I've worked very hard today. Thank you all so much for joining us. Everybody have a great evening. Be safe. Wash your hands. Wear your mask.
Good night.
Okay, good night.